Back in need, sorry to have crap to say about.
That's right, God willing, that's the way it might grow up. Uh, and there's a safety threat for us because we celebrate a real reason. Uh, so what we're doing through that, I'm glad we're here. We've got a reservation, sir. I want to read these by my own, you know, all the things that are on this. I know it's this, I'll just like, uh, we got a record, uh, and we would like to.
Well, I treat you to a line from the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, both with the same one making one regard individual with liberty and justice. What do you mean? What is the question? That's what I mean in, in the effort to protect the public against the board time of the mission. The conference line has been set up to accomplish the immediate set of our needs. Conference line is one, that's nine one seven, nine zero zero, one zero two two. That's that code is three two, three four seven conference line. This is not a code three number, and you may instruct the long distance starter according to your long distance plan. When the care person open the meeting for public comments, please call the instructions below. Please dial five, the moderator will also run into your mind when it's your turn to speak. And no talking but announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, you'll be allowed to speak for three minutes. This meeting will also be live thing on the Taylor County Board of Councilment Facebook page. Eight six six P S. You must have Facebook profile registered under Taylor County Board of Councilment and resume the meeting now. Facebook live screen will not be monitored for questions, so, so, questions come, please. Call the conference number if you would speak. Okay? Do we have some additions to the, additions to the agenda? Have all of you listened to the addition?
Yes.
Would you approve?
I would approve the amended agenda.
You have a second?
Yes.
All available?
Uh-huh.
Yes. So we'll go with the number four.
Boron place is three.
Okay, three and four.
Okay.
Yeah, three. Alright, three proclamation. Want to read it by Tyler only?
Okay.
Motion second read by Tyler only, this is.
Proclamation, Taylor County four, whereas the student athletes of the Taylor County are the day's fewest of our leaders. And whereas the Taylor County War Eagle Youth Football Association mission is to inspire youth regardless of race, color, creed, or national origin. To practice the ideal of identity, health, citizenship, and character. To bring youth closer together through the means of common interest and sportsmanship and fair play. To impart to the game elements of safety, sanity, and intelligent supervision. And to keep the welfare of the player first, foremost, and entirely through results play for glory. And whereas the Taylor County War Eagle Youth Football Association provides a safe place for our children to learn and grow. Ongoing relationships with caring adult professionals, life-enhancing experiences in character development. And whereas in twenty fifteen, the Taylor County War Eagle Youth Football Association started an opportunity that continues serving our youth for fifteen years. Now therefore, I, chairman of the board of councilmen, calling all citizens, going with the recognizing and committing to Taylor County. War Eagle Youth Football Association and board of directors dedicated service for continuing to provide comprehensive and effective services to young people in our community.
Okay?
We have representatives from the War Eagles here, I didn't know if y'all were coming to say anything for us?
Uh, first off, I'm, um, named Shannon, I am president of, uh, the kind of War Eagle, I'm also here for the boys. Appreciate the board doing this proclamation for us, we really do, um, what we're trying to do here is enhance the active performance of kids here in the community through sport. And so we have, we can say five already thirteen who serve the Taylor County War. And what we do, we serve a feeder program for the middle school. And we're starting feeder calls now, as y'all know, the middle school is on championship, uh, with what, twenty out of these. Uh, who in Florida nineteen is twenty two starts, I'm, I'm with the middle school coaches, I've got along with the senior level people that coach. Um, like I say, the feeder program is working, we went from finishing two and four last year to number eight. The nineteen to twenty two kids that started on those balls are produced by the Eagle Youth Program. So, we are seeing kids from sixth grade who are able to contribute as a military football player if they want. Versus kids who show that sixth grade who's never strapped on a football bat before. And by the time they figure out football at eighth grade, they're on their way to high school. So it's paying dividends, uh, paying dividends in classrooms, we had every kid eligible this year, academically physical. Whereas last year we lost five before they didn't start. So the fact we're holding kids to a two point seven E P A War Eagle, they translate to middle school there with like that two point out. So we're seeing the benefits in classrooms as well on the field. And I think, uh, also in the classroom, it's a way that our kids' behavior is improving a lot in classrooms. So we, we hold for that thing as well, we, we, you know, not just for all of them.
So I'm ready to listen.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm, I'm a dad, and I help with middle school, and I help with War Eagle program. Reason that we're here for one, a couple reasons, one, the proclamation, great for us, but there's a couple leagues that we need to. What we're doing is we're taking thirty six kids down the plant city side. We've been having programs, we're now, due to the drop, we've got all kinds of fundraising. Um, with my son here, he's one of the kids that plays on the middle school and then the War Eagle program. At that from last year, and that's also a great big program, they bring kids in all over the United States. Our kids get to go down a competitive level they've never seen before. So when you get one that back to the middle school level, it's like, hey, this is easy for other schools to have a good time with. Y'all keep believing how big this program has got, these kids this year. Middle school coaches didn't like it, they had three football games in seven days, he was not excited about that, he got really, really high way of ideas. But our kids travel, they had to go to Common Field, we played watch out of Common Field, and we hit the next city seven days. Um, so these kids are dedicated, they put the time in, they started, uh, lifting weights and working out too. So, you know, really big kids program for these kids, so, go about that, talk amazing things, great thing, but what we've done is we got to see these kids for seven. So thirty six kids for three meals a day, plus room and board, and gas, you know, down there. So my part of it here is that we're here for strapping for some money. Individually, like that, if you guys have any campaign money left over, we can definitely get rid of that. All right, the county itself, you know, we, we looking for any kind of money that could help, we've got people to donate money, so we're here. Like I said, we're leaving Saturday, and all the plants are made, rooms are ready, and we're getting, we're going one way or the other, but. Any kind of money that would help would be a great thing for us because we do believe that this program is really going to get bigger and stronger as we go along. Well, it is, it's, it's come out of the crisis, it's something, see it, these little tiny kids had a war last week on the street, and I said, nobody can not tell that. They got to give the kids money, it's too cute not to give money to, you know, people just dump money in the bag, I think it's called, it's too cute, but. You know, these kids are really dedicated, and I think y'all worth your time, you know, that's important.
Thank you, David. Go ahead.
We all know that our children are future leaders. And I'm really appalled, you know, what you're doing to help our children to eventually become good citizens, good, good leaders. Uh, I'm really happy to hear about the, uh, semantics that you, that you draw. So, uh, just again, thank you for what you do, and as you'll see me, maybe you're a holiday afterwards, I'll make a personal presentation.
Thank you, thank you, very much. And one other thing we're not going to give, it's a big deal about this year, we're going to do things happen, we might have rent a generator, British light, uh, middle school field. Next year, we're going to come back, before we did this, we're going to need to use the four complex, I want to explain that, you know. You know, so we're renting generators, running generators, but everybody has to work, and so we have a practice, all of that practice is about thirty. By then it's already dark, we're going to turn a generator on and light, so, next year, we're going to buy y'all out the four complex a little bit, so. It's a wonderful program, we just don't need to leave anything out, we can do it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
You know what?
I'm, I'm kind of like the other guy, I saw my team, and I think they'll do their best enough, and it's a good year, and I hope you guys are better in classrooms. But, you know, with grades, and I know, it's, it's my game, so, I think it's perfect, and what you got to do, and break these kids up. I'm part believer that these kids are learning way more than football and field. So they're not alone on field, they're on ground, they're trying a lot. I appreciate that, and for.
Why can't y'all let you have them for a week, you think?
I can't, I can't afford to beat that guy. Y'all probably taken thirty six of them.
I feel pretty grateful y'all doing, if it hasn't been for sports, I thought it wouldn't be here today. Baseball, baseball, and basketball, really, this program, children really need to follow, and it gives them a, a new meaning in life, really does. I mean, my coach really means a lot to them, and y'all have them, and work with it, and I, I appreciate that. It's, it's a situation, children really need a direction to go in, uh, if there's too many bad directions they can go in without school, and I appreciate it.
And I have to say, I thought the guys for the investment, I, I think it is an investment into the life, which y'all thought it's, and I agree with, uh, what the committee said. It's great to see the success, and one of the things is championship, that's all. Uh, but it's also great to see, uh, these guys learn a lot, like, and, and everything that's carried forward throughout their life. So, and I thank those investments to me, not often, so, thank you for the sacrifice, because all the, all the players make the, the things that I agree. Um, it's certainly part of the, you know, the success that carries over, and, uh, continues to come forward since two years to come, so. I would give my best to, and thank you very much for these opportunities, uh, while, you know, both of y'all have. So, I, I certainly do that, to be true, and to be fair, uh, that we're seeing the joy of success. And, uh, y'all, I'm doing here, um, successful, uh, a thousand percent, and I'm really, really, uh, thank you, so, thank you very much.
I go to Shannon, that's the other commission, for the commission is there on form. The one thing that I do like about it, either teaching them life skills or life you, they're going to, they're really great. You know, if we say, if we could say one or two, we would have done a monumental task, so. But if you carry the thirty six down there, we might get thirty five, you know, and we're going to put that thirty six, no. But what, what should we make a check to, we made a check, first?
Uh, for the boys and girls.
For the boys and girls, yes, okay. Well, appreciate your stuff, appreciate what you're doing, and we want to practice, okay? Alright, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Alright, so do. I want to say this.
Alright.
Hi, you there?
Thank y'all.
I'd like to see it, we're going to have to put a sign that says Home National Center.
Okay, thank y'all. Thank you. We go to number four? You got the next one, yeah?
Yes.
Alright. The word of the president's judgment, moving forward with the grant, committee.
Mr. Chair, I think we have three B on the agenda.
Three B?
Yes, sir.
What is that?
Three B, what is that?
Uh.
Oh, I thought it was, sorry, number eight, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. That's okay, no problem. You want to read this by Tyler? This is, uh.
What is this, this president?
Okay, alright. Yeah, number four, steps. Moving forward with the grant, committee, and offering projects for this would be a twenty twenty seven, Florida bottom of transportation. Office program is in about a grand line. Committee.
No one on the line.
Who's on the line?
No one here, I'm on the line.
Okay, Melvin, go ahead.
Yes, I'm on here, if you need me.
Yes, please.
Okay, and then y'all want to discuss your projects today for the, uh, trail, trees replacement alternatives, and there were several ideas being kicked around. So I'm just on here, if you need me, and welcome you to the interview.
Okay, alright. So we need to go, move on, but stop, but.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like for us to consider, um, the sidewalk from, um, Clark Street to Howard Street, be a time crest. This is something that, um, was brought up several months ago, from previous boards. And it was, uh, not built on, but it was approved by the last board to back in the school district. Of a lot of children other in that area, and I think it's just a purpose that we try and protect our school children in that area. And so I would like for us to consider, uh, that sidewalk, that would connect all sidewalks in that area.
Time crest?
It's, uh, yes, from Clark Street to Howard Street.
Wrong.
Of the, uh, time crest.
Okay, from what I can understand, is that, the grant, right, that would be two projects, that is one we talked about.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there another one?
Yes, can you, can y'all hear me, you're eligible to submit up to two projects. Uh, we do have to understand how they will be ranked, like what the priority is, and what the second one is. And there is not a cast match for either one. And keep in mind, this is twenty twenty seven funding.
That's five, six years from now?
Yes, this goes down very far out.
There's another one, is one, is the sidewalk down Old Dixie there, is that in that twenty seven program, or is that already in?
Yes, that's, say, down Old Dixie, from Jefferson Street to Plantation. Uh, it should be under construction within the next year, so that's already funded, and that's good to go. I know the, the other projects that have been kicked around was, um, Old Dixie down the public house, and then. St. Hackey on First Avenue to extend it out all the way, um, down to Roy, that was the, the project I know that had been discussed.
Okay, I, I threw up, still, involved that.
Oh, yeah, Jefferson, it, it should, I know the design and engineering is underway with, with the program, but it should be under construction. It's not late twenty, probably late twenty twenty one, but, but Mr. Committee, that's already funded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had to think that, uh, like when the sidewalk thing happened here, it's, uh, if we consider, uh, uh, probabilities that. Or in play there, you know, we see that it's not just for the students in St. Hackey school, but also the residents that are there, the church that are going to, uh, come and go in St. Hackey. So, my suggestion is that this, this project be ranked the highest. Like all of the volume of pedestrians that are there, the rest that are in play, you know, they're, they're already here, they're already in this area, they're walking down the street. So, all these, there are, obviously, there's certain factors, and there's no title in this area, so, once we get this here, we can. Have this, uh, pathway so that these, uh, pedestrians aren't forced to walk down the street. I've, I've been down there, seen, uh, most walking down the street, and, and have their heads. So, and this was, uh, uh, town actually, so, uh, I understand that, uh, somebody that's thought of it, uh, certainly, I don't know, but I, I would. I definitely advocate that this, this project be, uh, ranked the highest.
Mr. Chair.
Committee.
I also would like my project, uh, to be ranked as number one also. Um, due to the fact that we do have a lot of children in that area, and we have several schools right in that same block. So, um, and it's my understanding that there is a, there's plans or more than to install a sidewalk on First Avenue close to the school. When that tree was resurfaced, correct? There, there is, there, with the resurfacing, uh, First Avenue south, there will be sidewalks. Um, I, I mean, Melvin, do you know off the top of your head exactly where the route that sidewalk is? It passed off about two blocks from the school, and where that school will be taken off, and go on down, um, to approximately Roy. That way you can walk, you know, you have the, you can walk the entire distance of St. Hackey along there. And also, Mr. Chair, this, this project of mine has already been voted on, and, well, not voted on, but approved. Part of this coming up was staff, um, put St. Hackey on the rail.
Mr. Chair, I, I feel like this about St. Hackey building, there's a big need in St. Hackey, four sidewalks, they don't even have. Nothing in four sidewalks, and, and you got, in fact, like, in, in, in Taylor County, a big quarter that comes from St. Hackey quarter. And there people down there, and the children down there, they need to be called out, see, and there's, there's, there's sidewalks everywhere, they need to be built, but. Those folks down there haven't had any, to pick up, you know, and they, they need, they need to get up all those, and I'm. I'm proud of what was St. Hackey sidewalk number one for them, so.
Mr. Chair. I want to point out, if I may, uh, because I've been here for ten years. I want to, I want to speak to the probably fifteen million dollars that we deserve for them, and that did with St. Hackey and the beach. Uh, we have a three million dollar oak ramp that we committed. We have a red tree down there that we put in for over two, six thousand. We have oak docking at three hundred and sixty seven thousand. We have another ramp at thirty thousand, five hundred and nine. We have a dock here at a hundred and ninety three thousand. A community, uh, joint dock for fifty four thousand and two sixty trips. A line contract for two hundred and sixty six thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars. We're looking at a bypass down there for ten million dollars. We're looking at canal dredging in that district for four million dollars. We're looking at painting and a tile wall on First Alley. Steven Shrems was at it, I don't know, um, what the summing was for that. We have an estimate of a hundred and fifty thousand for stormwater engineering in St. Hackey. The cost of the project that we've committed to fix the stormwater problem, I don't know how many millions yet, that's a half, that's in the works. Um, also in that area, um, in the beach area, the leisure retreats was paid, that's why we're here, so. When I add up the known expenditures that we spend in that district, it is more than eighteen million. And if you add the stormwater, and you add all this stuff, it's going to be way more than that. I think it's time that we, I will take more of our funds in hell, I think that that district has received. More than their fair share of improvement in, in expenditure, so I think it's time that we put more money in hell.
Mr. Chair, respectfully, I disagree with that, and thank you for pointing out all the components, but I also would like to add. I did hear something about tax relief that came with this district, specifically, we have it. Well, I add that advice, and that's great, and thank you, but I also relay that consideration to Dave. If we're sidewalks, and I can add, because that doesn't, I, I don't know who agreed with Dave, but when the last sidewalk was put in St. Hackey. But I am very well aware of the needs and safety factors that are going to be addressed when this second sidewalk gets put in place. So, uh, respectfully, it's great, I think it's, uh, uh, testament to, uh, the investments that, uh, previous boards have put into Taylor County. But I don't think any of those dollars were unwantedly spent, and I'd also add that there are other opportunities for different locations, uh, like the inner city limits, that St. Hackey is not available for. So, Taylor County is responsible for, that rather than those kind of needs. And I also might add that all of those investments have also, uh, considerably enhanced the tourism that's been drawn to not just St. Hackey, but Taylor County as a whole. And frankly, our budget is very dependent on those tourism dollars, so, I would call all those things, uh, a wide investment. And I would also call them sidewalk projects being funded at Fairway, so, so, it, it does give the raises, the volume of users. It does just address tourism, it does just address the residents, and it does just address students, it addresses all of the above. And so it, it's sexually warranted that we would consider putting this type of investment in this specific location. It's not something that's going to be funded by a different entity, they don't have it often, they have had it often, but today they do have it often. Again, I would encourage us to see this as, as a number one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Because, uh, my, uh, we choose two projects, the missus, Parker Transportation, and they go through, do the new deal, they'll become wrecking, they're important.
No, sir, we, we would indicate our, our ranking, but then it would be up to D O T to choose which project to fund.
Yeah, well, with given both properties, I like them both have equal importance, just surround them around, there's kids, like, you know, each unit, so. There's St. Hackey, uh, they can argue, or these, uh, sidewalk, you know, they should choose the, for safety, that very way, so. I would probably give, give, put St. Hackey on top of this one.
Right, and I, I agree, I, I agree with Committee of Humans, that all of these projects in St. Hackey are warranted. I would not vote for them, have they not been, so, that's not the issue at hand. Um, and I think we're the, I think we're the body of who's going to be St. Hackey. So, I, I would like for, uh, the sidewalks and time crests, if given what I think is going to happen, that y'all are going to vote for St. Hackey, it's pretty obvious. And I would like for time crests to be the second one, and I'm a fan of, and, um, Mr. Victor, I don't know. If a board has already approved something, um, can I know the board overturn it?
Um.
Cause that was a witness of the board, uh, just three or four months ago.
I don't know.
It don't matter, we're getting that on, it's still approved.
Well, I, I think it's four can, yeah, now, I think it's four.
Four, no, I'm done now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, there's more, so, I'd like most of the St. Hackey projects, for things that are right. I'll say it, that much.
And then motion to check, all available? Uh.
Okay.
Close, okay. St. Hackey project will be the number one project. This is two, Taylor County, here is the second, okay, you want it?
Can I ask for some direction from the board, if there is alternative funding available for the project, whichever project is not funded? Would you like staff to pursue a revenue availability for that project?
Yes, I know, because I would like to see the, the sidewalk on time crest, such as the school.
Yeah, I, I haven't done it before.
I would like, again, to talk about the rest of the sidewalk down Old Dixie, uh, I know that's something that we.
Uh, I know that's something that we, the first part of it, really, that was Dixon's car on, Mr. Reddy. Reddy's most needed for. But down the road, I hope we can get some funding to finish the sidewalk on down there. Sir, I'd love to see that too, sir, the world's best little look down that road up there.
I agree with that.
And in a world of children, that walks up and down Old Dixie, and we're gonna have to run over on Old Dixie. Oh, they're getting down there at night anyway, but they got run over and said, "Have sidewalk over there." They would've been on that sidewalk, they wouldn't have been out there that long. So, I mean, if we can get some funding down the road quicker, I'd love to see that down there too. It's a shame, quickly lost that old railroad railway there. That was a made, a Viking walking trail that was from Bay County, really needed, but that's gone now. But the sidewalk will help, you know, that'll get.
Is that the direction of the board that we can have?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. No one?
You could very well submit, uh, Commissioner Newman's project as a legislative budget request. You're gonna be talking about that later during your meeting. But we could very well submit that for a, um, legislative budget request. And I, I think he would have, you know, he's got a good argument because of his depth along that route.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, uh, that would be great.
If I may ask a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, Melody, um, so what, what program was officially signed, uh, the sidewalk on sidewalks?
We can also submit that as a legislative request. You can, you can turn right back around, even though you submitted the transportation alternative. We can submit all three projects that the board chooses to as a legislative budget request too.
I think we should, uh, submit all three to every, um, program that's in, because I think that all three projects, um, are needed. So, can we do that?
We can, legislative budget request. When we get to that part of your meeting today, just approve doing those three projects, then we can submit all three. And then we can do, um, the other two sidewalks in St. Hackey as your transportation alternative project.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, the sidewalk on sidewalks be, be number two on the list of this particular, um...
That's number four.
For, for number four. And I also like it included on any other programs that we have to ensure a better possibility of that occurring. That's my motion.
Okay, I understand. I didn't see that all three of those projects should be submitted in that, in the second one?
Sure.
All right, did I have a motion on the second one?
Uh, okay, just, just, just to be clear. What I have is Commissioner Newman, they're loaded in, just taking in votes on two main projects, the number one project committed to the, um, the farmer's truck to take her out. And then, so now, I'll take all of it on that, that's gonna be the number one project. And then Commissioner Beagle is making a motion to submit the sidewalks, the two projects as number two. So, I'll, I'll, yeah, okay. And we did a second one.
Okay, we got a motion, second, all in favor? All right, all right, okay. All right. Now, we go to number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Go to number five, the board's opposed to discuss the legislative appropriations that's agenda by the committee.
I received confirmation yesterday that there is a January nineteenth deadline to submit our AMR request. Uh, I have on the list the courthouse improvements and adding a generator to that. Uh, we are working on our cost of the generator, but the courthouse improvement project is ready to be represented, so there would be very little staff work on that.
With the generator?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm always concerned.
Yes, ma'am. And then from what I'm hearing from the board, you would also like added to that the all three sidewalk projects. It has these projects, the sidewalks, park side, and the Old Dixie, um, second half project, correct?
Yes. Do you have any more that we're reviewing?
No. Like, the, we do not have anything else prepared. But I think if we submit the sidewalk project and the courthouse improvement project, we'll have enough time to have that ready to submit by January nineteenth.
Okay, I wanted to ask, Chair, on that.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask, uh, in terms of the court complex, is there anything out there? And, um, I'm trying to see what you may, may know. Is there anything else out there that needs, that we could add to this?
Well, we, we just received a two hundred thousand dollar FURBAS grant that was part of the AMR from last year. Um, I, I don't have anything off the top of my head, um, as it says, that could be submitted.
One, two, and a half hours?
Um, it was for playground equipment, um, the repaving of the trails. And I believe some additional, um...
Off off field.
Not the fields, I think, but, um, I'll have to double check on that. So, maybe it's one for off off fields.
Off off field, I think, maybe, or two.
Right, different.
I didn't, I didn't, I, I know it's something we like.
Fifty pounds.
They have an additional off off field, you know, I think it's, it's really, I think the layout's probably for two, have four fields, but I, I'll take the, 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 a few more fields than that. Our kids want to take two.
I don't think so. I'll, I'll double check that grant and see exactly what was in that award. Um, and we may be able to submit another FURBAS application, um, for the court complex as well. So, I can look into that. I will, I believe we also received funding for guiding agents. And they were enough for, for the softball field, I believe. But I'll double check on that.
And we're gonna...
Go ahead.
Um, and we're, we're reached up to seeing the walking trail. Okay. We have a gym out there in that court complex. It's the best one to, around as far as I know. So, I just wanted to make sure if there was anything else that we could use out there or needed, that we included that. And the other thought that I had was for the forest department hall, for the acoustics. Um, would that be a possibility? You know, we did receive appropriations before, some appropriations to this, some of the things that we've already got. And I know acoustic was one of the major items that we had listed that needed, um, certainly needed to be. And I'll double check on that and see if that's something that we can, we can, is close enough to be ready that we can reach that and how prepared by St. Hackey.
Part of my favorite project, the fourth half of all, that's where we worked, didn't that?
The foundation.
Yeah, but.
And lighting? I don't know anything about this.
We, we did some big lighting out there recently, but we really need some more lighting.
Yeah.
We really do. Uh, and I'll be glad to get added, added to that.
That's true.
Go ahead? Okay. Thank you. You got all that?
Yeah.
All right. We go to number seven, the board's opposed to discuss committee appointments that's agenda by the committee.
Well, uh, thank you, but I'll say it is a third, all these things, but I, I would ask that, um, Commissioner Newman would entertain those opportunities to, to put out with me. I've got the Dr. Morel, uh, committee, and I'm understanding that you served there quite some capacity. I feel like I, I would be willing to serve to, serve there and look at knowledge and understand that you bring to that board. So, if you would, uh, entertain, uh, training the TDC for the Dr. Morel, I, I would, I feel like I would be, I would sit there, you would certainly be there where you've been served. So, that, that would be fine, to be, I, I, I'd love to keep everything out there. Yeah. Well, I, I just feel I'm resident, more because of your experience and all of, of my committee, I feel like I could be, it's, 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 uh...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a problem with such a substance. It's been brought to my attention several times and within the hospital that there is an appearance of conflict of interest with Commissioner, Commissioner Lee being on that board along with his sister. Now, I want to say that, uh, I've heard that, um, his sister does a really good job. And, um, Commissioner Lee, as far as I know, he does a good job too. Uh, but there is kind of a current of conflict of interest, so just wanted to make that out.
I mean, that's a, a turn to say for, after the heat was complete, then, just, I'm not on the board. I just, when, when they start having their meetings, I walk out anyway. All I do is advise and look at the mechanics of that building and try to keep the air conditioning and everything else running out there and the boards and that kind of thing. I'm putting my foot forward, mechanics forward, not running the hospital, you know, and...
Makes no difference to me.
I'd say in that capacity, that, that, Bay County's been committed greatly by your efforts and expertise and sharing that with, uh, the hospital. So, thank you. And I, I would like to continue that. I guess I look out for Bay County, just trying to bug on the Bay County, what I'm doing. And there's been a lot of things done in the past, the hospital, uh, taking machines. I feel like it takes them to a better place, but, 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 uh, that's a good place for me. And, I mean, it's, I don't get into the running of the hospital business. I don't get into none of that. All I do is kind of keep the place, the mechanics out there working, everything, all that, you know, look out for all that.
All right, so we, you two are quick, quick. We don't need a motion for that yet.
I would say, Mr. Chair, that, um, that you, uh, say that, um, Commissioner Lee will, um, retain the BMA and Commissioner Newman will take on the TDC and ask for a motion to approve these committee's time of capacity.
Okay. That's okay. Okay. Go ahead, motion.
I'm, I'm motioning. See if that is.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Uh, okay.
All right, we go to number seven, the board's to discuss solid waste second. That's solid waste second. It's agenda by the committee number nine.
Well, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. And I know the board has discussed some of these items and issues. And so, recently, I've been, um, closely with the, with the President, the board. I love the issues of children's abuse over the last few years. Um, so, as you, you know, as President Ford had to deal with, uh, a little bit several child falls for, uh, the solid waste fund concerns. So, in the discussion that I had, different individuals have questioned and had concerns about the reallocation of those funds and how that can prevent, um, other possibilities in the sense of those fund being used for public works and firework. And so, understanding all those things, um, and also understanding that it would spend present, I've seen a hundred thousand weeks, that there's more full time use of hard models and RVs probably will be out. And so, to me, I feel like the board has discussed and looked into, um, the possibility of, of doing a study into the solid waste. I do feel like, that it's, I know it's discussed by council, but it's necessary as far as the legality. But I do also believe that informationally, since we're just here this board, um, for guys. And so, I, I want to discuss that and, and see what the board's willing to leave about, um, at this point, looking to, I have that study now, understanding, um, what I've been, and board has been, I've seen, uh, presented also to the county, so, and there's been discussions throughout. I feel...
Yeah.
Uh, can you explain, uh, what study you want done and what, what you're looking for out of the study and what that was, uh, how that was being done, what would be in our, but how much does it cost?
I'd say it's going, it's gonna be about twenty-five dollars and twenty, twenty grand. So, the study, as I understand it, is necessary, and, and, uh, in the sense of considering, um, moving what the establishment is. I do, I've, I've been told and seen that there's, there's quite a bit more issues as far as hard models than RVs and they're paying all the way. So, the study was, as I understand it, um, covering kind of liability that would be in place by having the study done, which is due in relation, uh, that the board can make, uh, a competent decision as to what needs are, understanding, which involves in the consideration that needs to be given.
Are you, are you wanting to just, um, assess the RVs and potentially, um, change the, um, the fee schedule as it is now?
Uh, I think the, the study is gonna give us that money to tell what we need to do. I think, and not, not just my opinion, well, not only my desire, but I like, I think it's an investment. I know it costs money. But I believe we can, uh, spend that money and out of the solid waste fund. I believe we can, uh, proceed and have a group conduct that study. And like I said, it's gonna be that, well, we can give for January workshop, uh, to, to further this, gonna not just solid waste, uh, but also seeing the, and the things that we were intending to contribute to, um, what we call the talent in management as far as, so, I definitely, uh, it is for pleasure that we have this study conducted, uh, at, at that rate. I believe that's what the talent will be. And while those, those, the studies being conducted, uh, that would give us time to consider what necessary needs would be in place. And once that study's completed, uh, then we would have the information to get it directed on, on a part of it.
And so, would the, the whoever's for the study, I'm assuming that, that you're saying that they would typically evaluate every camper and then come to all their conclusions from that. So, for twenty thousand dollars, if you know, are they gonna do that? I believe, in fact, it's not they're gonna do that. They, I think they would evaluate, uh, not necessarily our waste drain, but the services we offer and the, and then the purple information as a lot. So, the information from our purple. So, the, the number of, I'm assuming, portals that we have in Taylor County and what rates are assessed for RV, high camp, and the other property. Again, you know, the board, part of this board decided in a week, we're not gonna do that with the newborn and he's in a new majority. So, um, but I want to state for the public that I am not in favor and never will vote for increasing the fees for all RVs. That's not fair. And if you don't have somebody doing a study, it's someone who, like, has been living in there for two thousand years and that were two months out of the year. And let's just consider that we're gonna increase up these. And those people that don't use it, that is not fair. That's not fair to our people, and I'm, I would not support that in addition to that. I'm not in favor of spending twenty thousand, if that's a form number of taxpayer dollars for a study.
Here, here's a thing about twenty thousand dollars. To do it legally, to change any fee, we run into a, a problem if we do not do the study. Uh, we've got to do something with the solid waste assessment, one way or another. We've got to go up on one forty, or we've got to get everybody up to one forty. So, we're going in the hole on, there's nowhere around it. We got to get your CD, just, just other business, all this. When, when you can, oh, a whole chicken house up there for a hundred and forty dollars a year, try to load it at the time, we've got to get a handle. And I am ready to do something to, we got to run this thing like a business. We can't run it no other way. We got, we got to get our, where we not winning the old bitch, sixty-two million dollars a year on, on those options. I mean, it's just, we've got, it's...
A safeguard for the taxpayers of San Antonio not be subjected to this same type lawsuit because this court is faced with a continuing shortfall in some of those funds. And it's been for consecutive years, I'm not saying.
Yeah, I think we can't continue to do this, we need to do it again. You know, year after year, probably. If the dollars move money and if, that's why we're gonna have to do a study, whether it be today or five years from now, we're gonna have to do a study to get to where it needs to be. So, uh, I would say, so this, so the study, so it can figure out the surrounding counties that, you know, give equivalent of us and what, where they are versus where we are.
I don't believe, I don't believe.
But I believe it's a, a, you know, a study between counties, I think it's a study of statistical information within this county that's perduing the cost of bills. And there's a number of proposals that have, uh, uh, with certain power loads and things like that.
Um, how could you advocate for a study that's twenty thousand dollars when you don't know what they're gonna do? You don't know if they're gonna check how to do it, you don't know if they're gonna check C and D, you don't know if they're gonna check. But yeah, I have to know what twenty thousand dollars is buying me before I can spend my taxpayer's money on something that I don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I would.
And you're just asking them the questions of how could we, how could we advocate for their twenty thousand dollars when we don't know what they're gonna do?
Well, let me say this way, Mr. What I, why I was there saying is, and I believe I said that, this investment, twenty thousand dollars, so what it gives me, that I know, because I heard Mr. Conrad, I think he said, that without doing a study, you're owing the taxpayers of San Antonio an unnecessary loss of business. So all I do know is what I've heard him say, this one, is that this without the type of, it's a litigation case waiting to happen, and we have President says, between sixty and eighty, those high income counties that have been sued and that has had the same money unnecessarily because they didn't have statistical information that this type of study will yield to give guidance to this court. And I, but I can't say you did it because I'm, I don't work for the Department of Attorney's Office. I do know that the Department does these type studies so that guidance is given to a board of judges, state accounting board, county business, so that adjustments can be made and that the, the taxpayers of San Antonio is not subjected to the same high regular liability of moving an assessment without having statistical factual information to give guidance so that different assessments can be made, so that maybe, but the shortfall doesn't continue. And that we continue to have to lose funds and our employees continue to have to deal with resources that we can't provide because we have to lose funds in the middle of a business review. So, what I don't want to do is to, to not have this kind of discussion, really it's a workshop, uh, information wise, but since all commissioners were gonna be here, I thought it was a good time to get everybody's input so that we might proceed and not find ourselves in another budget season recession and wonder why we have another budget shortfall, but we don't have the information, that we don't have the citizens, and we don't have the study that's necessary so that we can address the incremental shortfall problem.
What I want to say is, yeah, just one minute.
Okay, where is the other thing?
I need to know, who wants to, what these people will give us. Okay, if they will let me know what they're gonna do for twenty thousand dollars other than just fund the missing out, this or that, I want to know specifically if they're gonna, the things that I'm just told to do, C and D, camp, those are the things that's been brought out here today that we think are the reasons why we have a shortfall. So if they're gonna identify why we're having a shortfall, I'm okay with a study that will, that will definitely say. But if they're not gonna identify these things, I don't understand the validity of a, of a, of a survey. Now, I agree, we're losing money and we need to figure out how we're gonna make that up. Isn't it in C and D, that's still the proper thing is getting that up to where it's supposed to be? Is this the hunt test when these people go in and use these camps for two months a year? If that causes a thousands of dollars shortfall, then what's your effect? But we have to identify and before I can approve spending twenty thousand dollars, I want to know what I'm gonna get for the taxpayer's money.
What I would like to do, to get from the Board, that if it's the direction of the Board to move forward with the study or that we investigate the study, what I would like to do is bring back the scope of work to the Board, um, Government Services Group. They are doing, um, this study and directing the study in this county. They have offered the opportunity to piggyback off that study. And I can also ask for a detailed scope of work and bring that back to the Board for approval. If that's what, for, for not to be approved, if that is what you would like.
I think that would be a prudent way to go about it, so we know what we're getting from our money.
Correct. And then, and that, you know, all I, and this is the same group that provided the fire assistance. So those of you who are familiar with that, that's, that's the type of data that they analyzed. And I'm sure it'd be similar to what they brought forward with that. But I can ask for, if it works, bring that back to the Board for approval or, or not be approved. And also I will ask for approval to move the funds from solid waste reserves, um, to fund the study. Now, I mean, also, if we're gonna have to decide if we're gonna have a study, or if we're gonna, I'm not quite what they give us, I can tell you, I would spend twenty thousand dollars at home, not knowing what I was gonna get from my life. They would have to tell me, you're gonna, this is what we're gonna do for you for twenty thousand. So I think that you bring back to us what we get for twenty thousand dollars specifically, so that we think. Then we decide if we want that study, if that study encompasses what we have identified here, then I think that would be, well, yeah, we need to identify that. So, and, and I, if I may.
Good.
But I need to inform the Board that it, it's going to take about four months to become a full study. So, if the Board has any inclination of changing any of the assessments, that decision has to be, will most likely need to be made prior to giving the Board the study as far as passing a resolution in the Senate. Not when we have until March first, I believe, to, or the Board would have until March first to adopt the resolution of intent and that would require consent of the property praiser and the tax collector.
We don't need to let that get by us on the timeframe, we've done that before and had to wait another whole year.
And that's why, since everybody was in, pretending today, I thought it was a good time to discuss this.
Well, I say this, I remember what Mr. Conrad said, we could not change any fee without that study done. So even if we knew what the study did ago or this year, it would help us a bit even changing the one quarter if we had to. I think he said he covered like one fifty six, one fifty seven.
He covered one fifty four with a resolution.
With a resolution. But really go up, to go up to where we need to recover money wise, that wouldn't do it. That, that extra, you know.
The forty dollars, it would bring in about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Right, right.
On our fall.
That wouldn't help.
That covered for a little while, but that won't buy new trucks and new dump dumpsters and, and stuff like that and repair some sites and build fences and all that kind of stuff. I make a point on the timeframe issue, go ahead and make a, make a, a motion to go ahead and do the study and get that behind us and when that's legally done, Mr. Conrad said, we beat the chance for two or three years and I talked about this study, I'm tired of talking about it, I'm tired of waiting, waiting another year to see if we pull over rates or anything or, or, there's a, I'm making a motion to go ahead and do the study.
What? Motion checked, all in favor?
Aha.
I'm opposed to, uh, uh, in our discussion, I'm opposed because I cannot spend taxpayers' money not knowing what we're gonna do. I think that's reckless and irresponsible. I think that we should wait until we get what they're gonna give us. And then, and, and what they're gonna give us will yield to the entities that I think the study is good. But I, I can't, that's the reason I voted no. I can't stick it to the, um, cameras that are there for a month or two with a hundred and forty, whatever this one is. God, I just can't do that. So my vote is no, for those reasons.
Well, I, uh, Ms. Conrad, I, I would appreciate talking to you, all the representatives. Um, I, I believe, very good, given the timeframe and given, uh, uh, certainly the years the funds have been moved through, I, I would, um, appreciate talking to you, all the representatives. And I might add, this is in no way an effort to make it to anyone.
Okay.
But it is an effort to not have to, in the middle of the year, lose funds for another resource that can't be worked and our employees can't lose. And it is an effort, but it can get statistical information. And that we can make, um, decisions, give them the guidance that this study will yield so that we do so in a way that we're not subjecting the taxpayers of San Antonio to the same kind of lawsuit that we know San Antonio and this county will face with.
Oh.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, well, that, that's, that's more than one, why, uh, but I mean, that's an important one to share with you so that we know what we're looking at. In, in last year's, uh, twenty twenty, we did transfer sixty five thousand dollars from reserve to give you security. We took over sixty five thousand on one. Twenty nineteen, we transferred sixty thousand out of this new reserve that we're able to, to move the money from other areas where it wasn't there. But this one, the reserve, twenty nineteen, we did have to transfer sixty thousand dollars to C and D. And in two thousand eighteen, we moved seventy six thousand dollars from reserve, um, to give you some solid waste reserves. So that's, those are the amounts we've done the last three years. And also that doesn't include any capital of, of the ones that still have that money capital currently for on solid waste, um, or, so this, anybody can actually make.
So that's about six thousand dollars moved?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. About two hundred, that is three years.
Three years. All right.
Mr. Chair. No matter how you promise, I'm still saying it's reckless and irresponsible to spend twenty thousand dollars not knowing what you're getting. I'm scared you're not gonna do it, it's reckless.
Well, Ms. Chair, she can add her advocacy, but she don't have to put that over on this board or me. And I respect for that.
I don't care if it's a reckless.
If you don't, then you can do it.
It's a reckless situation.
And it's a huge fault. But if not the taxpayers of San Antonio, then it may be to lose sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year.
I think we need to do something that we need to sue it right in the right way, on a reckless way.
Okay, we need to.
Um, Congressman, I, I'm new to this discussion, but one thought that has certainly occurred to me, I appreciate that studies may provide some protection for lack of better terms and terms of litigation. I'm a believer though that the studies need to be done, you need the information. I would just suggest you keep in mind that if you, you do a study of any type, it still needs to be right. Um, if somebody would sue us and have a different study that gives us completely different information, yes, we can rely on that study, you know, if we get sued on it and perhaps sue the folks who did the study for it. But at the end of the day, we're still responsible for being right. I, I just want everybody to understand that and, um, sometimes I, I, I get the, the CYA approach and, and philosophy and all those things, but I would just suggest and, and, you know, the, the law group would hear from the latter, you know, I know him pretty well, but, but I would just suggest that we do our studies because we need the information. And the, whether it protects us in the central litigation down the road, that's more of a lifeline. Does, does that make sense? I mean, you know, you can get differing opinions from different experts on all kinds of things. And that's how I see this in terms of if we were in a litigation, um, type situation and sometimes you, you have two completely qualified experts who butt heads on positive and bad side things. So I'm just, I just want to point that out and, and from the, um, CYA approach and, and things like that. There's no guarantee there that, oh, well, gee, we got a study, therefore we're protected, we can't be sued, that kind of stuff.
I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but.
Yes.
My last attorney, uh, a hundred ninety one thousand dollars, it's, uh, goes to law, it's a solid waste fund. That tells me, I'm not a counselor or a attorney. And I can do good kind of math, so we need information that will give us guidance, uh, for the word, look for a proper study. I'm not looking to be prevalent on any individuals or over assessing anybody that's for the sake of doing so. But I am for properly assessing and having a properly funded, solid waste fund. If we don't have to continue to lose, I'll also get a fund somewhere else.
Okay. Uh, what, uh, what's our, uh, direction to Mr. Monday? Can you just, uh, just do a say?
Get the study done and get, and she will get, she, she'll be able to run back the board does actually what they don't do. But like, 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 uh, the big players, the study is a legal, a legal, uh, thing that needs to be done just to keep us from being in another case for the law there. And I mean, that, that, that's worth twenty thousand dollars anyway, so, to keep being in another lawsuit. So, I'm fine with it.
I think our first conversation.
Go ahead.
You would need to bring, and bring them to the work back to the Board at the next meeting.
You've got a, that, all right. And we got, we got multiple groups that, you know. Okay. We go for another eight. The Board has considered voting funding the Big Ben Transit Town, the town until due holidays, again by Amy Sett, Grand Court, they.
Matthew Turner, please.
Motion checked, all in favor?
Aye.
And, good, motion passed. Who else? Do we got anybody from the public? No one from the public? Any staff? Okay, what's your next?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, just, uh, last week, we mentioned the, um, different one part stations. We want, what would we, how, how do we do that?
Upon review of the staff, it, um, I was reassured that the gas pipeline was taken into the location and the gas pipeline was taken into location when that property was offered up with consideration. The actual construction of the fire station would be towards the south of the property. So, uh, according to staff, there are no concerns about the, the location of the gas pipeline.
Okay, so when we expect, other time and, um, um, uh, it, uh, uh, all right, please.
Um, it would be later, it would be after, certainly after the holidays, but I'll, I will double check my comments for that.
Did you put a timer on that?
I'll, I'll get that for you. I'll, I'll update on after questions, we'll start bringing this back to the Board for review at our workshop.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see a weekly, a thing on all projects that are ongoing and potential projects like this one. So that the Board knows at all times what's the status of everything, when we're adding on the system, um, that we can give an answer. And I do appreciate that your updates that have been coming, um, solely cut off. I haven't received one in a couple of weeks, but, but that's something I like to get a report on every week. Um, because I get a lot of calls on solely cut off, really, and I, I, I want to be able to tell them where we are with that. And, and also hence the frames of the other projects that we, that we have going on. Uh, the sports complex, now, remind us again, when the sports complex is open and who's.
The sports complex is, I believe, opens around seven o'clock in the morning. Till when? Till, um, well, normally the gates are shut, it's after dark before gates are shut because we depend on the Sheriff's Office to lock the gates for us. So that's not something that's done when our, when our manager waits for the day. Um, so I don't think we have a set time as to when the gates are, are shut. And then the fire department opens them in the morning, I believe, to wait for the work.
And who can use the walk-in?
Um, basically, um, anyone can use the walking trails, the playgrounds. Uh, the fields are open by appointment and for organized sports, they might submit a safety plan that's approved by the Department of Health. And individuals can reserve the field with their family group. They want individuals can use, reserve fields for practice, um, they were softball. Um, and that is coordinated with Mr. Mullins. Um, the tennis courts are open, the basketball courts remain closed, um, because that's a contact court and we have not received clearance from the Department of Health to open that up, um, to individuals. We wouldn't have a safety plan or anything like that. So really all of our, the use of sports complexes is still being coordinated with our park and recreation managers. And that's for the Department of Health.
And I had a inquiry over the weekend or, or, uh, someone just, uh, called me and said, you don't need to open up that sports complex so that the children can use it in their place. They, they're, yeah, they're, and that's why I wanted to verify. I didn't owe them, because that person seemed to think that it was not open for anybody to use it at any time. I'll be good if not, but it's, it's open, um, I mean, we still try to coordinate the use, um, while we're still in this situation, like we would other facilities. But, um, certainly I know we have, um, some soccer teams are practicing out there. We have, um, some of our travel ball softball players using individual fields. Um, and we, they just have to coordinate with each other. Hey, if I wanted to take my little children and their friends out, try the afternoon to play football, could they do that?
Um, not necessarily. We don't, we don't have someone on site to oversee the use of the sports complex. So we do have to coordinate that and as far as the, the use.
I'd like to know about the board things in terms of, um, what did you say, um?
I'm glad, I'm glad you're well there. Uh, we ride a bicycle on, on the walking trail and I see groups out there playing football out there in those fields, you know, or, or just running and playing out there. I see families out there with their children doing different things. They're not on the, you know, on baseball fields or nothing like that, but they're out there in those fields.
Football fields?
You drive in, you know, and see that.
So, so I should take my children out there or yes or no?
We, we don't have someone overseeing, what we're asking our organized teams to do is coordinate with us so we can, the last direction I would see from the Board was we continue with the liability waiver and coordinate the use of the field. And that's really for our organized sport. So we don't stop individuals from using the property any more than we would say a hot car.
Okay, okay, so does that make sense? People can use that. Okay, I was just trying to clarify that. The other thing that, um, I feel that colleagues about is that King Beach on the, the little bridge and that seawall that's getting obstructed there. I know in the past, a lot of them have asked about it and you had someone to look at that, but I don't think it was him. And so people are still concerned in that area about that. And if they're down there and look at it, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if it's safe. It's, it's very unsightly, um, but it doesn't do anything for the aesthetics of our community. Is there, I'm just wondering if we should have tenants down there, if you should send tenants to, to look at that. And the problem is I don't think we have any standards, if anybody wanted to build that, that's how it looks, right?
That's my understanding. And what I would, what I would encourage the Board to do is, if you recall the last time that we discussed seawalls, that discussion was tabled and I would like to, um, consider placing that discussion on the January workshop so we can basically pick up what's left off.
Yeah, we'll just do that then. I would, not for next week, but anyway, but in January. And let's just see, you know, if, if, if he finds that wall and, and space and it's stuck on Paulus and, and we don't have any cost there for the set, I think that's the way it is. But I think we should be discussing.
Well, not only that, but the other thing that's, that's what needs to be.
And that, that, you know, I'm not concerned that much, you know, that, you know, I'm just concerned about that one wall. But if we need to discuss that, taking one on the building, a wall, if that's what you're referring to, then that's something we'll have to, have to discuss.
We know that.
Are you, are you familiar with, with?
I believe it's a challenge, I have heard of it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I don't believe we're able to go to that property, we, we, we're, that's all that's happened, so, so.
The issue is, there's two properties that are actually under the ownership of the county. And that's the location of these walls. And that's what's happening.
Sure.
It's how we resolve that.
It's a challenge, I believe.
Come on, man.
Okay. None of that?
Oh, I'm glad you came to the third, thank you for the moment for the special week and, uh, a little bit of time to thank the members.
Very good.
I'm certain that's what.
Thank you very much.
I would add, I'll do a, a fire station project and just as that project progresses, I was encouraged by Schwab, you know, to lead shots, as they walk shots, logo around two twenty one. Now, as that project progresses, it progresses, it goes above or, or where we can't do this project one. Properties then offered to sell, you know, would use that building as a fire station, do it out there, do it that way. We'll look at it, bring it upstairs. And the.
The fire's out.
So, uh, it's got, it's out. Here's out, they've offered to sell that too began, so, you know, put that fire station there now. They have a pretty fair product, one of the, one of five acres, uh, I think it's six base. So, uh, obviously that doesn't have any purpose in that, that was wrong. And that's tough when you get five acres, when you think, uh.
Well, I think.
It was, it was.
Well, technically you can't give a grant as well.
Okay.
If, if you can have a new guy.
Close to it, it's, it's, it's really, the problem is, is that the state, you will never, you will never get land that's, that's there and stuff like that, so they're gonna leave the, the office station, the office station, they're gonna leave that. Pretty much, they're just trying to solve it for business, that, they're rich on a mission. Time to eat. I was gonna go, I'm sure we'll get some exceptions. Yeah, but like you said, I hope they probably have to get the fire team, so I'm not, it's really, really, let it, and make sure it's work. And all of it, it's, we should definitely bring it upstairs. Um, it's there, it is.
Okay.
I'd like to put on a workshop to, uh, discuss selling those two lots of King Beach, we won't let nobody use. We won't let nobody unload nothing on them or do nothing on them. They don't need to be just sitting there, bro, we're talking, we need to, uh, put them on the, again, as a big boat. Uh, we had people calling us, this week, Scott, they didn't make any, to buy those lots, so. Uh, we have people calling, and since we discussed that, and making, actually buying those lots, so I'd like to put that on the workshop, too. There's nothing we could, we could, well, we could discuss the workshop, is it training, something that takes, we already own. We, we own two lots there by that concrete bridge right there on, on the back and out. And we, we're going back and out, and going soon, I mean. We're going to train those parcels for addition, something we own, that, that would be in addition to property we already own. To add the acres that the county already has. No, it, it, it's just, it's, it's, they're by themselves, it's separate from anything else. One on each side of the road, one of them, I checked with, one of them's buildable, one lot's buildable, and the other lot is just something, somebody, I reckon, put RV on it, you know, uh, one's buildable, one lot is. So it's got some value to it, and I don't know if y'all were paying any attention in the last few meetings we had, but it was discussed about, that the grabber was going to load the trash, and we've kind of gotten that thought, but I'd add, people, since we talked about selling the lot, uh, that's buildable, and the one that wasn't, or didn't, and so we need to get that on the workshop and get that, get that to here.
Well, it, it, it's the way it is now, it brings a value to us, right?
It's a value. We wouldn't let nobody use it, remember, we wouldn't let them unload the trash out there, so we never didn't want them unloaded there, so I agree, uh, get that, get that back on track.
And would, you know, maybe future use for it, um, would we ever need a ramp at any time, an emergency ramp or anything there, um?
There's not a real good location for emergency ramp, because of the size, shit working, uh, they're on that ground. Can I just say, if, if we were going to, uh, liquidate that property, that those funds will be utilized in, in sort of a recreation type, whether it be addition to something that we already have, or. It's not only a part of the general fund, probably looking at, on, in my, would.
Like what?
It would feel like in the general fund, that money would.
Yeah, that works, you know, too, uh.
I'd say if there's any other property, I'll go to the properties generally have, if there's any other property to sit on, if you want it, possibly anything. But if we're not getting used to, we don't see that we're going to get used to, but, those are themselves, those are, I guess, that's the type of. I mean, I mean, or, uh, it's not.
It's, it's on me.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner, in which, and I, I think it was at our last meeting, I, I think, I think it was here, but, uh, it, it was brought up to the fire station, the new fire station, to make it an honor of, of Commissioner Page. Is that something that you were entertaining, uh, uh, members of, uh? Okay, I just, whenever we discuss that, I would like us to consider that, but.
Okay. And what else?
Mike, it's over here.
They won't, oh, oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
They're, uh, seven seconds, there, but how, how do you get and name of the street and, uh, address of the post office? Anybody know?
Or the, I'm sorry.
Name, the address, and name of the street, or maiden address to the post office, how do you feel about that?
For the post office, or for, um, if you'll reach out, let me get out the papers, that's something that we can work on, that we can help people with.
Okay. Now, if you're, uh, if you saw my total cut off, those, so, like, I had a couple of thoughts. There's annual instruction, new dollars, instruction, putting some posts cut off, and they want to, they have that again. We don't know that, really.
We're still discussing the contractor, to involve that, that issue.
Okay.
So, and we're, we're in continued discussions with council and the contractor to try to resolve that issue.
When would you be able to let us know what your house is located to be?
Okay.
And can we? Well, you know, we need a way to let the public know, because we're getting all these calls about that ready, and there's nothing getting in the paper. I think that it's something, all these projects, like, just, I think the public, they don't like to know what's going on, so if you don't know, right? So, um, perhaps we should consider, uh, you know, a little piece of the paper or something.
I, I, you know, after last week's meeting, I, I did tell each commissioner and, and advise, uh, what was happening with the meeting. Uh, I'll, I'll see what, how the, um, community did today, and then we'll have a better idea of what we can, we can advise, as far as what happens, like, just, on the case.
And could you let us know the status of the public, if there's something that we can share with that? Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a meeting anyway. It's about, really, give us that.
One hundred and thirty. Is it one, six?
The hundred and thirty, six o'clock. Okay, six o'clock, okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Do you have a motion, would you?
My turn?
Motion, say, on faith.
Aye. Thank you, good job, I can, I, I do, I do.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, we're all.